Hola.
Hola, how are you?
Very well, how are you?
Hi.
Good.
I'm here.
This will be my very first time hosting anything, so we'll see how it goes.
You're in. I'm gonna probably keep my screen off and I'll mute, but if you need anything, I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I may turn my screen off occasionally so I can eat myself.
Okay, I hope you all well.
You know, friends tell friends if they have lettuce in their teeth.
Okay, I promise, I'll text you.
All right, okay. We, I don't think Tim will be here, but I do know that Leo is intending to be here, so let's wait for him for a bit.
He's not gonna be here, what did you say?
I said that I don't think Tim will be here, he may pop in at some point.
Yeah, yeah.
But Leo did intend to be here, I literally just left him at Medfield TV, so.
Oh, okay.
Let's give him a minute or so.
What was the topic? I can probably guess, but what was the topic of conversation?
Oh, we did, um, so we just did our kind of usual m updates thing. But the nice thing is that Brett has been putting that up there as also just a school committee kind of update as well. So we really just talked about the parameters around reentry and, you know, asking people, I think we can probably, you know, basically stuff that we've talked about that he's put out to, that Jeff's put out to the community, but kind of fleshing it out a little bit, so. Oh, and there's Leo, and I'm gonna send you over, dude. All right. I'm promoting you to panelist. I do it and then it goes away. All right, okay. Oh, hi Bernie. Hey Leo. Right. I think that this is all of those that we will have for right now. Tim will not most likely be joining us, but I will, I will take a look out, so. As we do it, let's call this special meeting of the Medfield School Committee to order on February 26th at 1:00 PM. And I will open the meeting with a roll call. Leo Brown.
Here.
And Megan Glenn.
Here.
Anna May O'Shea Brook.
Here.
And Jessica Riley here. I will probably be taking notes, but if all of you could also take notes too, since usually Tim is our, well, and Andrea will be here too, but since Tim is our usual guy, that would be helpful. And he's very sorry he couldn't be here today. Um, all right, so what we're specifically talking about today is we wanted to have a workshop specifically on communication, both I think short term around reopening and then talking about how we put some of these initiatives that we would so much like to do into kind of a more long-term, kind of a long view of how we, how we tweak currently and then how do we kind of implement that over time? So I don't know if anybody wants to necessarily start right now about how we communicate about reopening and.
Jess.
What?
Tim's here.
Oh, Tim, yay. Hey, Tim, I'm glad to see you.
Yeah, hi. Sorry, I'm a couple minutes late.
Oh, no worries. I just, I was, in ways of introducing, I was saying that we were, we wanted to talk about communication today in this special meeting, that this is very much kind of a free-floating discussion about communication around reentry, how we can support the district's efforts around that and how we can kind of initiate our own efforts around that. And then also future steps from there, how do we take the small tweaks that we would like to do and institute them in a more long-term strategy? Now, I know that's a lot to talk about during this period of time, but what I'd really like to talk about is, is really starting focusing on reentry. How are we able to kind of communicate that out? Who takes responsibility for it? What sorts of kind of flow channels happen there? And then probably breaking this down into who goes away and does what? So that after this, so that we can kind of really start thinking about the long-term as opposed to kind of the short-term, so.
I think that before we can even have the specific discussion on how we can communicate the reopening, I think we just need to flush out really some misconceptions that people hold about the school committee as an entity in itself.
Okay.
And how by tweaking our methods of communication, we could really make that more apparent to people. I mean, I feel like the perception is that we're this all-powerful, all-knowing entity, which, God, I wish it was the case, but we're really actually not. And I'm not sure if it's due to, I know one, one of the biggest gripes is the MOA and how, how could we have, you know, voted for something like that? Because they don't see the dialogue and the debate and the negotiations as part of law that happen. But that in fact, we have very little jurisdiction outside of the budget and the hiring of the superintendent and policy. And then in fact, the landscape that has kind of presented itself this year has been an abundance of information that we digest and then changes and completely contradicts itself the next day. So it's, it's a, it's a cycle of reaction that we have. And I think the more that I think about this, isn't a reaction to like social media or, or anything, but a reaction of how do we, and I hate the word, pivot from these bursts of information and how it affects our plan? And I think the problem lies in kind of communicating that this is where we're at right now and be on this journey with us, because we're not a keeper of all this knowledge and we're not sharing it with you, we're also trying to keep up with it. You know, I think the conception is that people think we have all these secrets or we have all these plans and we don't. And when we do, we are communicating them out, right? So my objection, objective in this, and then correct me if you guys feel differently, is to put in place specific things that will allow the constituents in our town to be with us where we are and follow along and not continue to think we are not getting information that they know. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so you're thinking about essentially like, how do we in kind of the larger sense establish what a school committee role is, what kinds of information we have? And also allow people to know where the best place to ask for the information they need?
Is found? And I think to an extent, I mean, many times we don't know the information before.
Because it's so granular within the operational capacity.
Correct, correct. And so to clarify that to people that, you know, we didn't know that either. Whereas the misconception is you all know and you all talk about it and you don't tell us, which is not true and it's against open meeting law, obviously. And the fact that many people contend that we don't disagree with each other, when we all know, we do and we have robust dialogue and debate, unfortunately, it's in executive session, which is by law protected.
Under those, under those specific protections.
Correct.
I mean, unless it's. The kind of things that are lent to.
Right.
Yeah, go ahead, okay.
So, I mean, I have, if anybody else wants to chime in before I launch into my laundry list that I made of ideas that I have.
Oh, I think, you know, Megan, you, you're going. And I think it's, 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 you know, it's funny, I was, last night I was working on a lesson plan for some students and I was watching this really groovy dude do a TED Talk, you know, in terms of stop, look, go. This is our stop, you know, and I'm glad we're having this workshop, so thank you Jess for organizing it, because we just have to just stop and take a breather sometimes and just assess where have we been? Where are we and where are we going, you know? And, you know, and just to reflect, and I do, you know, I believe that there is a mistrust of out there. Whether valid or perception or real, it's, it's there. And I think we have to acknowledge that. And, and I think, you know, as Megan suggested, maybe like reevaluating steps to take or foundational communication steps. This is so vast and it's, you know, and, you know, Tim and I do it on the communications subcommittee and I think, oh my gosh, you know, um, but I do think there are some, some foundational tweaks and, and changes that we can do. And, you know, personally, I just took down, you know, some of my, my notes and I think we should hear from other people, but, you know, the email protocol, I think it's great that we now all get the SC chair and it doesn't just go to the chair, so we know, we can keep in tune of, you know, what's on the hearts and minds of folks emailing us. But, but you know, how are we going through that? We're not supposed to reply all that violates open meeting law, because then that can be seen as deliberating. But, you know, so working through the protocols, how does that look like? So we're still in tuned and know what's going on and what's being said. And then also, you know, I would really love to see a reopening public forum. And I just, I really feel that we may not have all the answers, but I feel like the time is now and, and to actually answer questions. And if we don't know them, we can say we don't know them, but you know, just allow people.
And a forum is a, is it appropriate venue for that? You know, like that, that within a business meeting, it ends up kind of not being manageable when you have kind of like 400 people.
Yes, and I think that's another topic. I think we need to talk about that as well.
Right.
You know, in terms of how that flows our policy, et cetera. But how do we?
But in terms of reopening right now and a public forum, you, you think that that would be helpful? And I think we need to talk about the timing of that, because I know that Jeff has some concerns around how we're, that there are things that are not exactly decided yet and that, that there's also some level of negotiation that needs to happen, or not negotiations, but discussions with staff that, that need to happen before we can really be presenting people with.
He can acquiesce to whatever timing that he feels works best, but I think the main objective of this committee, this workshop should be that that forum is scheduled and held.
Okay.
Whatever time it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I realize, you know, we do have to be mindful of all the, the pieces, but I think a big piece is to allow people to voice whatever concern they have and just to, to just open up the doors.
There are surveys that are going out that he wanted to kind of assess. But I think that needs to be made clear on the survey that their responses are what is formulating the plan, right? As opposed to you need to decide on the plan with the information that you have now before being able to have a public forum. I think that was the confusion, like how can I fully be informed to make a decision on this survey if I don't have my questions answered? Well, if you're saying, and I think that is what Dr. Marson was saying, is that he needed the results of the survey in order to formulate the plan. Am I wrong?
Um, you know, there've been so, so many surveys. I know that Dr. Marson is planning on sending out, and perhaps it's gone out, but I haven't seen it for one reason or another, a survey specifically around the information the district needs to know in order to move forward, right? So how many people would choose to stay in Cohort D? Or not just stay in Cohort D, would choose to move to Cohort D? And busing certain kind of operational things there so that we can start making plans towards those numbers, staff hiring, you know, facilities, those, those kind of very specific things.
Okay. My concern there though would be.
And that's, you know, that's his, his purview, but.
Yeah, no, but I, I just mean like, I personally would hope that there's, and I think there's going to be some information included with that survey that helps people make their decision. Okay, so you're saying yes.
I, well, no, I'm.
As it stands now.
Nodding moment.
Yeah, you know, people might be concerned about certain aspects of school that we're not sure, like lunch, for example, like eating and things like that. So that plays into my decision on whether or not I'm going to send to school versus Cohort D. So not being fully informed may drive the results of the survey. Sort of like the bus, what happened in the fall? People didn't have all the information, they thought, oh, I'm not sending my kid on the bus, things changed, voila, we had a disaster.
And I think that we should, um, I think that we should actually anticipate that, much like the fall, because this has changed, because as people spend, you know, a week or two weeks kind of in school or kind of moving on, the, the change always leads to questions and confusion. And, you know, I think that, I think there's a really important point here around kind of doing multiple modalities too, that to your point, a forum would be really helpful for people to kind of open up and talk about their concerns about how they, how they would kind of, what concerns they have about reopening. But I also think that there are ways that we can push out information or ask for feedback that is also not just within the forum piece.
Totally, yes.
You know, like when we have done, when we did the, the logo discussion earlier this year, the amount of information that we kind of collected and pushed out in an FAQ around specific questions that people had and being able to try to redirect the ones that we're building specific to the building and then also larger questions across the district, how do we collect that information? And is also, is that, again, a school committee responsibility? Because we want to know and we can hand it on to the schools itself? Or is that a school district responsibility? I think that one of the things that happens in, in Medfield is that we are a very hands-on school committee. Probably certainly more than I have heard from other districts in a lot of ways. And I think that we've had this kind of like fully, let's all hands on deck, pitch in kind of mentality. But again, to your larger point, how do we kind of establish what a school committee actually does, right? How, how involved are we? So like, how do we kind of find that balance?
Well, I think that right now is not a normal.
Yeah, no.
Business as usual, so we shouldn't be treating it really as such, right?
Okay.
One of the things that I was thinking of, and you kind of just touched on it, was just a running Google document with, that's linked to our webpage. And it could have a dropdown menu of, you know, my question is regarding transportation or safety or metrics or whatnot, and then a further dropdown if it's school-specific. So it's kind of filtering them out for us and then assigning, there are five schools in Medfield, there are five of us. Each of us gets assigned a category and make sure that those school-specific questions get to the place they need to be and are responsible for that. That kind of divides.
Great idea.
Beautiful idea, I love that. And, and to you, I, I want to revisit Jess, what you were saying, is that a district, is that school committee? I really feel that as elected individuals and living in the community, these are our friends and neighbors who have elected us. And we're the gateway, so to speak. So I, I do think it is our responsibility to, to, to allow that. And then, and then to, you know, funnel it to, to the various schools or, you know, obviously they should be part of this. We are not the be-all, end-all, but.
Right.
We should be allowing this to happen.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, I just wanted to make sure that we had, in, in posing that question, I wanted to make sure that, that we were talking, that we were all speaking the same Greek to some extent, that we were understanding what we were talking about. You know, that, that this is not normal times, I, you know, and I know that all of us have worked harder and more hours in, in a capacity that I think that we never expected. However, even before this, we have always been a very hands-on kind of, of group. So I wanted to just kind of see what the, the temperature in the room was. It seems as though we, we have lost Tim and I just want to respect that he was, probably had to, to leave. But we'll note that he, he did enter and then exit. So Leo, do you have any thoughts about this in particular, what your thoughts are?
Yeah, I, I mean, I echo the concerns that, you know, that everyone had brought up. I think the, you know, this misconception of hiding something from the public is, needs to be addressed head-on. I like the forum idea, I think the forum idea is a great, that's a great one to get specific items to kind of create a network, a communication network into the schools. So, you know, whether it's, we partner up with the principal, you know, to help get some things answered too. Like we get the, like Megan said, we each take a school, we pass it on, we, you know, go to the principal and Jeff and say, this is the question that, that's come in. You know, and in, I also think that it's not business as usual either, right? This is unusual time, of course. And so we need to continue to, you know, meet as regularly as possible, as often as possible. As a matter of fact, I think, you know, between now and through the end of April should probably be every two weeks minimum. To even, you know, I like, you know, the idea of the open forum is good, but like you said, 400 people at one time is not going to be effective in that. And people are yearning for two-way communication too, right? So maybe if we meet more often and have more airtime during those meetings, it doesn't have to be all at once, right? And it allows that as things are going back, you know, as we're going back, things are going to bubble up, right? Something's gonna, some, something will, you know, whether it's a concern or, or, you know, something will happen that to be discussed. And, and I think I'll just spread that time out as we're, you know, knock on wood, usually, you know, you know, going back to some sort of normal schedule. So I think that, I think just that, because it's not normal times, right? This is not business as usual. I think the, the need for outlets for people to talk is important. I mean, which is why I was hosting sessions. When I was hosting those sessions. And when I was hosting those sessions, that's what people really wanted, they just wanted some airtime to bring the concerns up, you know? Some people did abuse it and continue to do so, but, but most of them don't. Most of them just want to be able to be part of a conversation and be able to have two-way conversation.
So for a very long time, we offered office hours and, you know, I mean, they were lightly attended. And then through the speed of this, and by lightly attended, I mean really attended. And we did make our, our time to kind of be able to do that. I don't think that that is also a, I don't think that that would be a bad thing to revisit going forward, particularly now that we have kind of the world of Zoom, you know? Like, like it could be that from now on, whether it's in the short term and going forward, we can do Zoom so that they're, as part of that outreach, right? So that this short-term idea kind of around office hours as well, if people don't feel like they want to be in a larger forum or whatever, we can also be reaching out to people through office hours or however that goes. And so maybe that's a, a concern that we want to think about too. The one thing that I.
Last time, and I think.
Sorry, what?
I said, we, we brought that up at the last workshop, revisiting that. And I do think that should be an action item.
Yeah, great. Okay, so let's put that, I'm gonna put that it as an action item. One of the things I do have to, just because I have spent so darn time, so much time in that policy book over the years, there is a very specific policy that's kind of handed down and is not specific to just Medfield around channels of communication with the superintendent's employees. So I know that we have many informal relationships with many staff throughout, but to really officially communicate in the way that we were just talking about, we would have to then really kind of pass that through the superintendent and figure out kind of what the, the policy and kind of legal channels are around that, because there are.
Can you give me example? I'm, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm following what you're talking about.
Um, if we were to, and again, I don't think we should get.
In the forum, like she's talking about if the forum comes in and, and I have, if I have.
Leo has five pieces of information that he needs to hand on as feedback to somebody who is not necessarily our employee.
Right.
But his, the superintendent's employee, that that's an actual policy, right?
Right.
And it is a, a legal policy that is part of best practices through MASC. So it's not un, I think certainly within our culture and within the ways that we communicate it, it's not something that's un-adjustable. But I do also think that we need to respect, again, this kind of like, these are not normal times, but we do only have one employee and so, or person that, that we are in charge of hiring. So, and within that, we just need to make sure that we are being mindful of the, the channels around.
So you're saying that if he, Leo got information or feedback that needed to be passed on to Wheelock or some.
And that he was somebody who was specifically assigned to Wheelock, not to me, to.
I would send it to Jeff.
You would have to send it to Jeff.
Yes, yes, of course.
Unless Jeff felt as though there was a, I just want to make sure that we are not entirely bypassing the administrative structure.
Correct.
You know, so that, I, I just want to make sure that that's something that we're, we're being mindful of and then.
Well, I think that's part of building the foundational communications structure, right? Is that, you know, with the email, the SC chair, you know, what is the protocol? You know, if we are going to go to this Google forum, you know, we have a rep at each school, which I think is a great idea. What are the protocols? So we're not creating them as we go. I think if we have structure, we all see it, then.
Yeah.
Just, yeah.
And I think in opportunity crisis, right? So for the longest time, we have always kind of relied on our informal networks around how we kind of get a beat. get a bead on things and stuff. But if there are ways that we can put this informally now and then moving forward in that we can see if they work and if they help things now in this crisis time, then in the times where things are not as crisis laden, we can be looking at the value of those as well. So as for a date and a structure of a forum, I do think that certainly, I think all of us have kind of spoken to Jeff. I'm sorry. My timer is on for us today so that I don't go over.
This is a half hour, we've allotted an hour.
We haven't allotted an hour, but I wanted to make sure that we got to some other stuff too, but this is all very rich. I wanted to, unfortunately, it's also distracted me. I think we need to talk to Jeff specifically. I do know that we need to have some level of I think that it's important that we go back to Jeff to talk about where his survey kind of thoughts are right now, so that we can also come up with our own sense of questioning. And I think that that's an action step that we need to
Yeah, I would think, you know, a process, how are we going to get to that point, you know?
We're gonna need I think we also need to bring back to him the suggestion, I don't, and you can agree or disagree with but I really feel like there needs to be a pretty structured and predictable communication from him at certain, maybe if it's, he will, like if I say weekly, maybe at least bi-weekly to parents that is basically, you know, structured by goal, action items to attain goal, timeframe to attain goal, just so people are more informed of the process or where the wheels are spinning. You know, he does a lot, a lot, a lot of things that people are not aware of and he's not getting a lot of credit for it, but the things like, for example, his advocacy with the superintendent's board or his work with the state reps. His, his weekly discussions with the commissioner. I mean, he's in the trenches. But I don't think our constituencies know this. And I think it will I know it seems like it's more work for him to do this, but in the end, I think it pays off better to, again, bring people along with the process. And in a way, I mean, I do this in my own practice, kind of writing and keeping track of meetings or things that I've done helps me kind of formulate better plans and really understand information that's coming at me. I don't I don't want to assume that that's something that's going to work for him, but I feel like in this is me and my parent hat, I really need to hear from him predictably, you know, like, oh, okay, I know what to look for. It's Monday, we're going to hear from the superintendent about what's going on, you know? That's going to take some of the heat off of the emails that come in saying, we don't know what's going on, you're not telling us, you know? So what do you guys think about that?
I think, I think it'd be
We should probably talk to him privately.
I know he does his periodic updates, but perhaps it's like a Friday afternoon status update, right?
Blog.
Yeah, but really short, nothing like, here's this, like
He does that sometimes, but I know, to, you know, to his credit, it just, everything is I mean, I feel like this as well with, you know, the other, you know, groups I'm in, it's just, it's an assault and you're just trying to, you know, stay above. But you're right, if we had some sort of either support or system
I think that will give him support because it'll let the little bit of light into like, whoa, yeah, well, this changed and this changed, you know, just little births, births. So people are along with the process. Because right, and I mean, I've felt like that often during this too, like the rug's getting pulled out from under all of us. Before I even knew what happened last week, it's changed this week, you know? So that was just an idea.
All good, good ideas. One of the things actually, when I was at and I want to kind of segue, so I, let me summarize this first half hour or so. The committee in general feels as though it's important to have a forum, hopefully sooner than later regarding reopening and other multiple channels for people to be able to provide feedback and also that we can answer questions that we can answer appropriately. And that there's also a need to let people know specifically what a school committee does in real time. And that's probably a longer term commitment. But the other thing is, is that we wanted to talk about an action item around office hours, which would be another one of those kind of multiple modalities. That there needs to be information given to parents before we ask them to make a decision about cohort D. And that, you know, I'm not sure that that's actually as I think about it, given that the circumstances at each school will be so different, I wonder if that we would kind of give the feedback to Jeff that that needs to be like a school specific email about the information and the distance and kind of classroom makeup, which I know that they're still kind of struggling with. Obviously, we've got Memorial back in. But, you know, Wheelock's going to look a little different than Memorial, Dale's definitely going to look different than anywhere else. Blake is going to look different in different times of the day and the high school is going to look very different from any of that. So being able to have those those buildings communicate specifically with their parents and constituencies is important so that then we can answer questions that are appropriate for us to answer and he can get the best information. Does that sound like a
Hundred percent, yeah.
An adequate summary, okay. And then we want to think about having asking Dr. Marston, who has been trying to put out a lot of information, but having it happen kind of on a Monday basis or every other Monday basis.
Whatever day he finds appropriate.
Or whatever day
Yeah.
he would find that to be helpful. Okay. Are there and so I think that going away from this particular discussion, I think it would be really helpful if why don't I speak to Dr. Marston about kind of specific dates and you guys can also individually speak to him about specific dates, right? I'll bring this. And then we can really understand when the most advantageous time is. Where we would be able to get the best information and people would be able to have the best information from us. So that it doesn't just feel like this kind of free-floating anxiety around, we don't know what we're doing either, right? I would like to be able to, to give people valuable information at the same time and not just kind of, you know, like, I think we need to strike a balance. We don't know everything, but we know a lot of things. And I think a lot of it will become much clearer
Yeah.
the next few days. So and I'd like to just kind of have you know, given that we are not exactly sure what the dates are for this kind of reentry right now. I mean, it's kind of, it's always that same spinning balance, right? How do we decide?
He also makes
Commit to having a forum and a back and forth.
And we commit to having Stephen or Nancy Thompson or both, I'm sorry, Kathy Thompson.
Yeah.
Both at that forum, okay.
Oh, well, I don't, I don't know, but this is, I was hearing, sorry, that was like a, yes, I hear you right now as opposed to like, of course, that will happen. So I do want to say that, you know, we have called a joint meeting between the BOH and the school committee. And that will be on March 9th. We'll post that soon. And I am talking to Stephen about this. I've asked him to kind of give me a call, but I I would like the kind of question and answer or kind of public comment, public input part of that discussion, like I see us going to them saying, this is, this is where our plan is right now. Please give us some information about you know, impacts on these different building parameters, on these different, you know, like, what do we need to be thinking about in terms of variance? What do we need to be thinking about additional layers of protection? And what do we need to pull back? Is there a level of kind of performative hygiene, you know, as we've been hearing about it? That we don't need to do, you know, or what do we need to pump? Like, those are the questions I would like to be able to pose to them and have them be able to give information to us. And then I think I'm very open to, to opening this to the public via video or audio to have people ask them and us questions about reopening in this context of health and safety within the BOH meeting. And then we can bring those answers back or we can ask Kathy to be there for for our forum as well. But that there's two opportunities there for people to ask about safety. I do want to make sure that we don't bring to the BOH out of, out of respect for them many of the questions that people have asked kind of previously about you know, why weren't we doing this in January or whatever? I mean, I think we need to stand in the place that we live and face forward.
For sure.
And I also don't think it's fair to the BOH to have to have that discussion and use up their very valuable time on things that people have concerns about what, what the school has done, you know?
But they also have the knowledge to say, you know, back in January or November or whatever, we were seeing the spikes in the public, you know, health nurse, say, it wouldn't have really been appropriate at that point to, you know, so it is sort of
They may feel that it would have been, but I also think that, you know, again, it's that same like science and, and health considerations in the way that we have to consider it, which is through regulation and resource. And I don't want to have to make them kind of have to deal with that in general. Like, I would really like to see this, but, but, you know, conversations go where conversations go.
I was gonna say, we can only control what we
I can, you know.
Which is nothing.
Take the wheel for me at this point. I'm like, go, just, okay. You know, the spring is coming and we'll be able to get outside and there are things in place right now that bring me much greater hope than perhaps we were able to kind of have in a very concrete way.
It's just that I don't feel incredibly comfortable summarizing you know, the, the, the answers of the Board of Health when they could be present to give the information.
Do we want to, so within that forum, we would, we would ask Jeff to see if Kathy could be there.
Okay.
Kathy Thompson as, as a member of the Board of Health and also as the nurse
The school physician as well, you know?
Yeah. So I mean, this, yeah.
I mean, I've been pretty open about my lack of epidemiology training, so.
Oh, you underestimate yourself. No, I mean, it's absolutely true. So like to see the school physician and Kathy. And we can talk to
As far as like allaying some of the nerves of parents, I mean, she's in there and she's seeing it and doing, I mean, an unbelievable job and she's kind of giving a window into what's happening at the school and
She's really been the primary contract tracer for the town, quite frankly. I mean, she, she, except for a very small part of the population has been the person who has spoken to virtually everyone who has had to kind of, and done a significant amount of the kind of immediate testing that needs to happen. And can also give us, and give people very much a real life picture of pool testing of the bumps. Again, one of those helpful things is that, that the state has agreed to fund pool testing for us through, you know, the middle end of April and perhaps the more of that will come as opposed to just doing the first five weeks. So now we are less concerned about how we find those funds, which would have been roughly $100, $150,000 plus to get through the end of the school year and we're managing to kind of whittle that down, which then helps us with the kind of risk factors and people feeling okay about that. All right. So now that we have talked about this, we're at 1:43 and I know that we have an executive session that must start by 2. Do you're talking about Megan and I think the rest of you are having thoughts about like how we put out communication and maybe next steps? How do we, how do we bring these action items so that they don't get lost? And how do we literally fit these things into our day and the superintendent's kind of bandwidth as well? So with that, Megan, do you want to, I have some very specific and concrete information about some conversations I've had around around Medfield TV and I don't know if, would you like me to offer those or not?
I was gonna actually, I was gonna actually touch on that. I know that you had said that the MUP dates are I guess these information that you give is completely in line with open meeting law. And so in my kind of view it would be more beneficial, is that a word? Beneficialer?
Both of those, more beneficial or, or, yeah.
Um, the day after a meeting or two days, whatever, blasting out another Aspen with the link to the meeting. And I know people are not keen on watching the meeting.
Oh, I've gotten over that.
Attaching maybe even the agenda narrative, which kind of explains a little bit of the agenda, I know. And then a timestamp of where we discussed each of these things in the meeting. So that way we're not having to redo minutes or anything immediately because you know that that's a process, but it allows people to kind of read more into like, what did that school reopening thing entail? And then there's a little
Right, yeah.
And okay, I'm going to just fast forward right to that part there because that's what I want to see.
Actually, so, so some of the information I have hooks directly into that.
I love that, by the way. And I think we would need to, I wouldn't want to put that burden on one person. Maybe that's a share the love thing and we all take a
I think we need a template for it.
Yeah, exactly. Like in a, you know, a schedule of such.
So I did have, we did check in with Andy, who's the Andy Wall, the school attorney. And he said, as long as it is very much only what has been discussed and only what has been decided essentially, right? So that we can release the video and we can release kind of timestamps around where this went. We have been releasing the agenda for the last three weeks or so before the meeting. Sometimes it's like last week, unfortunately, we couldn't put it out until that day because the Zoom link hadn't been generated by the town yet to to, you know, like kind of post that agenda. But I mean, obviously, these are calendar problems. These are things that we can fix over time, again, as we put them into, into a process. The other thing I learned from Brett is that he actually also then transfers the school committee meetings into an audio-only format that allows people to listen to them as podcasts. And that is available on the YouTube format as well. And then as we were talking, I was saying, you know, that's great for like broadband, kind of broad information, like if you want to have a three-hour thing, but how can we how can we do quick hits around school committee roles and responsibilities? As kind of baseline information about who we are, what we do and what school committees do in Massachusetts as pieces of information. And then also structure our updates and our kind of how do we allow and make most accessible to people these conversations that we, that we have as like an update, right? For, so for today, Leo and I focused on getting into school and that's probably For, so for today, Leo and I focused on getting into school, and that's probably about a twenty-minute blurb that actually works quite well as a podcast too. So can we be doing that? And again, with Megan, with your kind of idea as well, I know that we've wanted to put out a summary after. But there are constraints around that, but can we make that?
Really just.
We clip out parts of the conversations, right? Like when I talked to Brett about, like, are there parts where we can clip out the conversations? Upload the audio file of that one part of the meeting if it's important or whatever. I mean, I think that those are.
I think that just is more work than just saying, here it is, here's the time to go look at it, you know?
Except that I think, yeah.
And I I feel like, I mean.
I'm looking at accessibility too. Like, I know that people want to know, but I also think that if that sometimes it's.
Yeah, but I don't think if they're not watching the the meeting, they're not watching the MUP dates.
Oh, no, 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 I don't think so either. I mean, I think that, you know. No, no.
To bullet points on a Facebook page. That seems to be what we need to do, right?
The word, Leo.
Some truth to what he's saying.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But attach the link if people want to find out hopefully more, you know, and you know, it is hard to kind of boil everything down to a bullet, but there can be some highlights and if you're, if you.
Well, let's be straight up. Here's where we hid this information and weren't transparent. Here's where we.
Stand in the place that you live. So, okay, so at at one fifty, I'm going to sit here and kind of summarize and see what we can do to in terms of assigning who who goes away and who comes back with what, right? So I am willing to, obviously, I need to talk to Jeff. And again, all of you need to offer your input to him because we will not be communicating with this as a full group outside of this meeting. So if you have things that you want to do or kind of impact on this conversation with Jeff, please also speak to him individually about that. But I will bring back to him the suggestions that we just talked about. Do we want to? Does anybody want to come up with an office hours schedule?
I'll do that.
Okay, Anime, you come up with that and then we'll populate it.
Yep.
And forum, I will talk to Jeff about the forum and kind of most advantageous dates and
And process.
And process. And perhaps what I'll have him do is put that out to you from him. You know, like specific dates and so that, you know, it's not seen as deliberation amongst us, but you know, kind of the the dates around that.
Leo, you have two cats?
No, I have a dog the size of a cat.
Do you have parrots?
No, that's a, that's a canned terrier.
Okay, oh.
Yeah, okay, now I see it's a dog.
And Mac is about to have a crisis if I don't plug it in. So, uh, hold on. All right, I want to cut that meeting down pretty quickly. And why don't I try to come up with a template for agenda release and then agenda or then meeting kind of review for the Friday or Saturday after we have a school committee meeting?
Yeah, I'm happy to put the times on the agendas for you.
I don't mind because I actually go back and watch. I know it's so awful. Sometimes it takes me a day or two and a meditation tape before I do it, but I do go back to see kind of how that, so I don't, I don't mind doing that, but I obviously will kind of think about how we make that a process.
A sustainable process.
A sustainable process.
I can work with Andrea, hello Andrea, on the Google Doc that, and sort of come back to you with ideas on how to filter it down.
Okay.
And I can assign everyone.
That idea, yeah.
And I know that, Megan, you and I are still kind of in this process of working with Andrea around how we get the school committee web.
Yeah.
To look a little bit more user-friendly. And actually, I I spoke to Jeff about this 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 week and because Owen is the one who needs to kind of fiddle with templates. He is okay with with us meeting with Owen and taking some of his time to figure out how we get information up there, like, you know, even our picture and, you know, depending on what we're going to do, you know? You know, either information about the committees we're on or if we want to go so far, and I think this is a different conversation for a different workshop as, you know, kind of putting in a LinkedIn link to to our kind of professional status previous to this and or within this, you know, kind of what are are because I do think that people kind of just think that, you know, we just threw up our hand for election and and got picked. But I think we all, and anybody who does run comes to it with a set of skills that that can be an advantage to a lot of people. So maybe being able to be a little bit more kind of forthright about that. And I've been kind of looking through other school committees' websites, that many of whom are actually far less informational than ours, but many of whom do a better job. So I think if we want to keep on talking about that. Do we have any? Did I miss anything within this for immediate action steps? And do we want to? Do we agree that probably in about two weeks, it would be helpful for us to come back together within a workshop status to kind of figure out how we, again, take these things and move on?
Yeah.
Okay, so I can either circulate some dates that you would reply to me only or or we can work that out now, but.
Missing Tim, let's, we can.
Yeah, let's do that. I think you're absolutely right about that. So I'm thinking, what, I mean, generally Fridays seem to be okay for us for this kind of.
My day off, I like, yeah, I can.
You know, there's no such thing as a day off. What do you think?
Day off from my paid job.
I don't even, yeah. I'm not even sure I have a time that my email shuts down, honestly, at this point, but I should probably work a little harder on that. Okay, so being that that's where we are, do I hear? From here, we will be entering into executive session. And we do not intend to return to the meeting for executive session. This executive session, if I may announce it, is to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member or individual. This is regarding the February eighteenth, twenty twenty-one Open Meeting Law complaint filed by Christine McQ Potts. And to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. And this is also in relation to the February eighteenth, twenty twenty-one Open Meeting Law complaint filed by Christine McQ Potts. And, okay, so do I have a motion to move to executive session? Okay, so Anime, so moved and then do I hear a second?
Megan, second.
Megan, second, okay. And we're going to hope that my battery doesn't die in the next two minutes. Leo Brem?
I.
And Megan Glenn?
I.
Anime O'Shea Brook?
I.
And Jessica Riley, I, we will move to executive session. We will not return. And thank you very much to anybody who was here as an attendee. And thank you very much for your time, always. Thanks. I'm going to end the meeting and then there should be a link.